Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting, town of Wolfboro, February 21st, 2018, meeting to order. Mr. Owen, do we have need for non-public tonight?
Yes, we have a matter of real estate to discuss.
Okay. First, we have approval of minutes, February 7th, 2018. It was a regular meeting. Ward?
Yes. I have two changes. One is on page 10, and I'll start with the one, two, three, four, fifth sentence from the bottom. And it says, "Mrs. Murray, question how long," and it should say, "the RIBs will be turned off." So you take out water and put RIBs. And then the next sentence down, Mr. Ford stated, "We will turn the," and again, "take out water and the RIBs off." And then the next sentence, "There will be no affluent flow." So people are very clear that this is the sewer system.
Okay.
And that's that one. And then on the following page, 11, the bold, it should say, "The Waste Water Collection System Asset Management Plan."
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Anything else from the board? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Exclaim.
We have a few public hearings tonight. We'll start off with a temporary outdoor event permit application. It's the Daniel Webster Council Boy Scouts of America to hold a fishing derby way station on May 18th through the 20th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon on Sunday at the town docks, Cape Park, and three parking spaces closest to the Wolfboro Community Bandstand. Is there someone here from the Boy Scouts to speak to this?
Could you turn that light if you want it on, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Dylan Crossden, I am the representative from Daniel Webster Council Boy Scouts of America.
If you want to just tell us a little bit about the event and what you guys do, just give us the background. You're on TV, too, so it'll give the community a little bit more of what goes on there.
Sure. So last year was the first year that the Daniel Webster Council Boy Scouts had taken on the Winnie Derby. It was a very successful event. We have the two way stations. One is in Laconia, and the other is right over there by the docks. Basically, we're looking to do what we did last year, set up the way station by the gazebo. We had three parking spots. One was for the fishing game, that they could have one vehicle, and then the other two were for volunteers that would be at that event. It was very successful, brought a lot to the community here and on the other side of the lake as well. So we're basically just looking to do what we did last year. There wasn't a hindrance on the community or anything like that.
Okay. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yes, the only thing I saw that on 3/20, 3/1, 2018, your insurance policy is going to run out. Would you just give us an update when you get that new policy?
Yes, absolutely. The National Office there for the insurance binders, they run March 1st to February 28th, so we're just waiting for that new binder. Yes, absolutely. I can bring that up to the office or email fax, however you would like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I'll entertain a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to hold the Daniel Webster Council Boy Scouts of America to hold a fishing derby way station on May 18th through the 20th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon on Sunday, the town docks, Cape Park, and three parking spaces closest to the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold model yacht regattas from April 3rd through November 6th, 2018, Tuesdays and Thursdays only, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street. Sir?
Mark Whitehead. I'm on the board of the New Hampshire Boat Museum, and it doesn't seem possible, but this is going to be the 10th year that we've run this program, and we just keep going strong. It grows every year. We're building six more boats this year, and we've built probably 150 or more, and everybody in town seems to enjoy it, and it's just been a wonderful program, I think, for the community. Any questions?
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions from the audience? I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I also noticed that in June, your insurance policy runs out. Will you update us?
It'll be updated in June, yes.
Thank you. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold model yacht regattas from April 3rd to November 6th, 2018, Tuesdays and Thursdays only, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Next, we have Brewster Academy to hold On the Green I Arts and Crafts Festival on July 6th through 8th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on July 6th and 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on July 8th on Memorial Field.
Hi, Chris Brown from Brewster Academy. This is an arts and crafts festival with some snack foods, like popcorn and lemonade. We do this every year. It raises money for day student scholarships. And before you ask, I have new insurance in my binder right here, if you want it right now.
I won't ask any questions.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the audience have any questions on this event? I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor events permit to Brewster Academy, hold On the Green I Arts and Crafts Festival on July 6th through the 8th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on July 6th and 7th, and from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on July 8th on Memorial Field. Second.
And a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Great, okay. Brewster Academy again, hold On the Green II Arts and Crafts Festival on August 10th through the 12th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and on August 10th and 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on August 12th on Memorial Field.
Same thing, different date.
I'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the audience, questions? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Brewster Academy to hold On the Green II Arts and Crafts Festival on August 10th to 12th, 2018, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m., on August 10th, 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and August 12th on Memorial Field.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye opposed? Okay, the final public hearing is the Wolfboro Lions Club. Sorry, nope. It's the Hospital, there are two more, Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold a street fair on August 3rd through the 4th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Monument Field.
Yes, I'm Sarah Silk here to represent the Hospital Aid, as Jane couldn't make it tonight. This will be our 81st Hospital Community Aid Street Fair, and the tents will go up on the 27th of July. Everything will come down on the 6th. We do have a new insurance certificate that will go to Annie in May, and the parking plan is on file, and it's the same as always, donated items, volunteers work there, and the proceeds by equipment for community, from the Hospital Community Aid for the hospital for patient care, not for day-to-day expenses, but for patient care for the hospital and also over at rehab.
I'll open the public hearing. Any questions from the audience, comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Huggins, to the Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold a street fair on August 3rd through 4th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Monument Field.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye opposed? And finally, we have the Wolfboro Lions Club to hold 44th Annual Great Smith River Canoe and Kayak Race on May 19th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., beginning at Albee Beach and ending at Dockside.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from this one.
Good evening. This will be the 44th year of the Great Smith River Canoe Race. The race starts from Albee Beach at 1:15, goes across Lake Wentworth to the entrance to Smith River, down Smith River into Crescent Lake, follows Crescent Lake to the Crescent Lake Dam, where there's a short portage into the Whitewater stretch of Smith River. It comes out at the former Excelsior Mill site, where there's another short portage into Back Bay, and concludes at Dockside. Registration the day of the race is from 10:00 to 12:45. You can also pick up registration forms by calling my office at (569) 5454, and the Parks and Rec, and also the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce will have entry forms, and there are 19 classes to accommodate people of all ability or lack of ability.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Public hearing's open. Close the public hearing. Board members? Make the motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Lions Club to hold the 44th Annual Great Smith River Canoe Race and Kayak Race on May 19th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., beginning at Albee Beach and ending at Dockside.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Next, we have our bulk vote, which includes weekly manifests, property tax abatements and refunds, property tax credits and exemptions, notices of intent to cut lumber or timber, a yield tax levy, and a raffle permit for Hospital and Community Aid Association. I entertain a motion to accept the bulk vote.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on one. It is for, I think it is 44 Fire Tuck Way, and it's for 2019. They had just missed cutoff date.
Which item is it?
It's, let's see. No, it is for Granite Lane, Wolfboro, first one. And it says on the back, "Purchase the house on 410, 2017, new Hampshire resident as of So we can approve it, but it's not going to go in until 219.
For Granite Lane, okay.
It's on the back. It's from Todd. It says it right there on the back. I don't mind approving it, but the people are going to have to realize we're approving something for 219, not 218.
Correct.
Should we do it, or do you want me to re-
Yes, it was recommended by the assessing office for approval.
As long as it's noted that it's for 219.
Also, Mr. Chairman, there was an additional bulk vote item, was a raffle permit for the Rotary Club, and they're running a function in conjunction with their Irish Spring Fest, which will be a traditional Irish corned beef dinner at Brewster Academy, Estebrook Dining Hall on March 16th, and in conjunction with that event, they'll be selling raffle tickets for a, to win a trip to Ireland. And my neighbor won that trip last year. He won the trip to Ireland, so people actually do win the trip to Ireland, so.
So are you the one to buy the tickets from? Because you have the winning tickets.
No, no. But I will be buying a ticket, yeah, most definitely.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to accept the bulk vote with the windows and adding in the, Mr. Owen just stated, raffle.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the bulk vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Moving on to new business, we have our finance director, Pete Chamberlain, here for revenue report.
Good evening. Pete Chamberlain, Director of Finance. Well, this is the first month of the year, obviously, not a lot exciting going on. The, at this particular point in time, we should be around 8.33 percent. The general fund is at 7.9, water fund at 18.785, and it'd be good to note that the enterprise funds that have debt service payments have fairly heavy debt service payments during the month of January normally, so they're elevated. The electric fund is a little low, and the reason that's a little bit low is because there is a payable, the first PSEG payment in the year is always payable to the prior year, so that's going to be a little low. And with the overall expenditure today at approximately 7.5 percent. I had a few notes in here about some odds and ends. I know there's some questions, Linda.
You answered them in the email.
Yeah, in the fire department budget under the field, there was a negative in the transfer column, and I looked at that, and I realized that I had corrected that. Yet, when I was going through, I didn't print the corrected page out and replace it, so. And then there was also an encumbrance that was lower.
Yeah, and you answered that. I just wanted it, what I saw was outstanding at the end of 2017, wasn't the same amount that came in as added to the 2018 budget, and you told me that that was for the consultant, and I was fine. I just was wondering why there was a difference.
Normally, we leave January and February open for accounts payable transactions. Those will back into 2017, and that will lower any encumbrances for the prior year, prior, and we'll shut them off at the end of February.
Okay.
And then ideally, if things go the way they should, the transfer numbers, budget transfers from the prior year into 2018 will, should stay the way they are, for the rest of the year, anyway, so.
Thank you.
Revenues, not much to talk about there, with the exception, I think that I, the town clerk was mentioning that she thought that motor vehicle fees were a little bit lower than she expected, and thought maybe there were some people out there that hadn't registered their cars, so, or trucks, or whatever, so.
Any other questions for Pete? Thank you. Next, in our new business, we have a commercial vessel landing permit, the Millie B.
Good evening. My name's Chip Beerweiler. I'm the manager for the Millie B for the New Hampshire Boat Museum. I'm here to request this evening to the renewal of our commercial vessel permit, so that we can continue doing our scenic boat rides for the town of Wolfboro and the surrounding area for all the rides that we've been known to do. And yes, I know our insurance policy is due in June, and we will get a copy down to you when we get it in.
Any questions?
I have one, and this is probably from Mr. Owen. We have an annual landing fee. Are they paying it in full right away, or are they going to make the three payments?
It looks like they're making an estimate of the full amount of landings that they'll make during the year.
Yep. We paid in full, based on the estimate that we made.
You're paying in full, okay.
Yep.
That's what I was just, that was my answer.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of a commercial vessel landing permit to the Wolfboro Boat Museum for the Millie B to operate from commercial docks at Dockside in 2018.
I'll second that.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next, we have a renewal of payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the New Hampshire Boat Museum. Mr. Owen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Joe DeChiro of the New Hampshire Boat Museum came by the office a couple weeks ago and asked about this agreement, and pointed out that it's, the old, or the current agreement will expire on March 31st, and that it needed to be updated and renewed, so I've undertaken to do that. It's been updated with the current tax rates. Evaluations of the properties haven't changed, just the tax rates and the new amount payable to the town under the payment in lieu of taxes agreement. So I think it's all set for your approval.
Board?
Do you like a motion?
Absolutely.
I move to approve and sign the payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the New Hampshire Boat Museum for 2018.
Second.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, we have discussion of the hawkers and peddlers' location for From Scratch Baking Company. Mr. Owen?
Yes, the, as you know, we have four downtown locations that are identified in the ordinance as being available to peddlers and hawkers and peddlers, push carts, basically, and so the other three were all returnees in the same locations, so there was no issue, so they've been approved. This fourth location, the applicant was seeking a different location than that specified in the ordinance, and also different than what was assigned to them last year. Last year, we had a bit of a problem because the designated location didn't work out for them, so we tried moving them around on a trial basis, and basically ended up with them down in front of Black's Paper Store on the corner by the fire hydrant there, and this year she's seeking to be located down at Dockside. So I think the issue, well, there's a couple issues. The ordinance may need to be revised if we're going to start assigning different locations. You have the ability to do that, as the ordinance was adopted by the Board of Selectmen to begin with, so you don't have to go to town meeting or anything to revise the ordinance. And the other thing is just to see if the applicant and the board can come to an agreement relative to a designated location this year.
I think we also have to consult the applicant starting down at Dockside, because he or she might think that's his or her exclusive privilege.
I think she's looking at the other end of the ox closer to the Dockside Restaurant, but I'll let her speak for herself.
So we, we set up where the ordinance was, but then we were told we had to move, so that's why we moved last year in the first place, further up the street, which ended up being in the street, which just wasn't safe. So then we moved across the street. That was another option given to us that also wasn't safe. We ended up down by Black's. That is difficult as well, trying to get in and out of, that's a busy intersection. It's just, it's not, it's not a good place to try to be, taking things out of a car, setting them up, having one of my employees sitting there in the corner, then trying to leave. It's, we tried it. But the other option that was given to us last year was this spot at Dockside, so I was given one of those two options at the meeting last July. We decided to try Black's. I'm just asking if you would try the other one that was given to us as an option last year.
Linda?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, when we granted this location four last year, and when location four was created, the Downtown Grill was not there. It was a drugstore. So it was a good spot at that time. Now, we have conflicts, and that's what I had. I had a conversation with some people down there, the owners, and pointed out that, based on the ordinance, she was too close, and that's why we started moving her around. And my feeling is the board needs to take a look at his policy, but I don't, I think we should be able to find a spot for her this year. I think we have to decide whether we want four spaces, or we want three, and what that fourth space would be, because we don't want to compete with the businesses who are here all year round, having to pay taxes. So I'd be comfortable giving her a trial waiver this year down to the Dockside area and see if that would work out, and it may help us decide whether we want four or three hawkers and peddlers sites.
It's final, ma'am. Board?
I was just wondering, will there be any kind of a conflict with her being beside the restaurant there, or the product's different enough that you won't be competing for sales, or?
Right. So last year, one of the members of that restaurant was here, and he said that it was fine. Plus, I own a business here in town already, so I know what it's like to be here year round, and I already am very careful of, you know, understanding, understanding that dynamic. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't have anything that they have. You know, we're just bakery, bakery items, so.
Yes, I think last year, we talked to Mr. Rourke about it, and he didn't have an objection last year. I don't know if we should re-approach him this year, make sure he still feels the same way about it.
I think we need to do that, because anybody having a bite at her place isn't going to eat at Dockside or the Grill. So I think we need to see the year round. I love From Scratch Baking, but we also have to protect the year round tax areas, as Linda said.
Right, but I do want to point out to you, Dave, that the Downtown Grill had muffins, cookies. That was the issue. They do sell the exact same products, and we were, she was within the 100 feet. I do agree, we should check with the people who are renting the Dockside restaurant, and maybe we can make a motion condition on getting approval from the owners of Dockside to let her go down to the town docks, and if not- to let her go down to the town docks and if not, put you back in front of Black's if you want that spot. I don't particularly know of another spot, because I think any other spot, I think we've got a lot of our handicap parking spaces by those, so.
I have an issue with going down to Dockside in that area personally. I think it's a really busy area in the summertime and there isn't a lot of space between that tree and the restaurant, or the tree and the walkway and the steps that go down to the docks. I'd want more information. I want to know exactly how big a space you want, where you want it. Before I make any decision at this point, I'm not in favor of it. As far as I'm concerned, we've had this process for a good many years and the people that have had those spaces previously, you know, had no objection, at least that I remember. And, you know, just because you don't like a spot, I mean, that's too bad. Those are the spots that are available. I don't like making more spots, especially at the dock area. So I'm against it.
I'm not asking to move because I don't like it. I'm saying that all the spaces that we were in were not safe for our employees to be there. So one of them was, they were on the street, you know, not in like any.
Some of the other people are too, right in front of Sandy Martin's. There's cars coming and going out there all day. I mean, the ones across the way where Billy Hot Dog was for many years. That's right on the main street. That's right at that same intersection where Black's is.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So, I mean, I'm, I don't want to keep changing everything to accommodate one person.
I didn't want to keep changing either. I, I didn't, I didn't even initially ask to set this in motion because I thought that we would just be where we were and I was perfectly happy with that. So the only reason that we've had to move is because we've been told we couldn't be where I wanted to be initially. So I'm just asking you guys to work with me.
I'm just not in favor of it. There's nothing here that tells me exactly where you're going to be, how much space you're going to use.
It was.
You know, there's nothing to tell me either, you know, what time of day. None of that is here.
Are those requirements?
There's no information for me to make a decision.
I wasn't aware we had to tell what time of day we're going to be out there. That's not in the application.
I would like to know that, because we have boats going in and out. We just approved the Millie B, Mount Washington.
I'd be happy to give that information if it's on the application, but it's not on the application, so I didn't know you needed it.
I would like to have it. I think the rest of the board might, just because that's a congested area to begin with. Dockside opens at 11:00. The Mount Washington comes in at 11:00. Millie B's going in and out all day. There's too much going on down there and that's a narrow area, very, very small area. They have picnic tables there. They have benches. I just, I need more information before I'm going to make any decision.
Yeah, I, we've got a problem, because if you read 737F, "No vendor shall be within 100 feet of an established business offer for sale any like items offered by any other established business within that distance." That's what we have here. She is within the distance of the Downtown Grill. So if we can, I don't, we made that mistake last year of granting it when they were in conflict. So are you suggesting that we just not grant the fourth one, which was one of my things?
No, she said that. Black's worked. She felt a little, that it was.
But that's not the space that we have.
That's correct. But we could give her another waiver for using Black's again this year.
Okay, I just need to know where you were going on it.
I have no problem with her going to Black's again. I just have a problem with loading up the dock area with all these different things in the summertime. And there's nothing here to show me where she's going to be, nothing. You know where she's going to set up?
I didn't know I needed to be quite that specific because it was already given to me as an option by the board last year. So I was under the assumption that it was okay, because it was already given to me as an option last year. So I didn't. Yes.
It was discussed as an option, I think, between Selectmen Murray and myself and you. It was never.
It's in the notes from last, from that meeting.
Never brought to the full board.
It was, I can print out the notes, the agenda, the minutes from that meeting. It's, I was given those two options. So that's the only reason why I'm here tonight is because I thought it was an option already, because it was given to me as an option last year.
I don't remember.
It says that, that Mrs. Murray made several inquiries about different locations from scratch, two locations with V-shaped spaces in front of Black's and at the downtown docks by Dockside. And that's in the minutes of last year, July 19th, 2017. And she picked the one over by Black's. So once we realized we had the problem that we had her within 100 feet of that business, we gave her those options. And that's in the minutes. I, you know, I don't have any problem if we feel we want to, you know, put it off for another meeting, have her define and look at the space, or if the board is, you know, not interested at all in letting her go down to Dockside and wants to give her the spot at Black's, then we should make that decision.
Board?
Yeah, I'd just comment that, you know, because we do have a, ran into a problem here with the original location that went in there. We tried to rectify it last year and that option was made out there. I think she'd like to try the Dockside spot. My opinion would be to allow her to do that, do that on a trial basis again for one year. But I'd like to have her come back with the details of where she'd set up, what she needs for square footage, stuff like that, so we can see it on a, on a map type thing there and make sure that we're keeping enough alley width and stuff like that for people to pass. But I would personally be okay with letting her try the, on a one-year trial basis down there on Dockside.
Okay, so with a, so with permission from Mr. Rourke, basically.
And conditional upon that, too, yes.
And with a detailed drawing of exactly how big her booth is and where it's going to be set up, we can review that the next meeting? Does everyone agree with that?
I think that makes sense, because we are not in agreement and I think you would like that, Dave, that we hold off and we get that information from you, I think would make sense. I don't know how, well, Dave Bevers said he wanted to check with Dave Rourke. So I'm, I'm comfortable of tabling it at this point and putting it on the agenda and you can come back with a drawing? I'll move that we table until next meeting?
I'll second that.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I wouldn't ask my opinion. I think I'm in favor of, if the Rowarks would sign off and also the existing vendor, the existing vendor might be marginal. He or she might feel wiped out. So I think we, if those two people agree, I would agree to having it on the, as far away from the other vendor as possible, but in that area.
The other problem can be is if we have that spot for a vendor, the others could start screaming and say, hey, how come I wasn't allowed to do that? How come I couldn't apply for that particular location?
I think we have.
You know, it's, we're opening up a lot of problems here, in my opinion.
I think what we need to do, which is what I said first of all, we need to take a look at this ordinance and decide whether we want three or four spots. And I think that is an issue here, because I, we're hunting for that fourth spot, is what we're.
And when I, we've hunted, this will be the third spot for the fourth vendor. That's not right.
We're trying to find it, you know? If we want to go out and say, okay, once we do that.
Or we just eliminate it.
Well, I can go either way, but I think we have to do something about it.
You know, we've got prime foot traffic. We've got prime property on the Dockside, period. We've had one vendor's been down, I don't know how many years, he's been down there selling hot dogs, but nobody's had an issue with it.
But it was a change of business that caused this issue, not.
Maybe we ought to just have three spaces, eliminate the four.
I could go on that.
Because we're just hopscotching around all over till we find a spot that somebody likes. And I don't think that's fair to the other vendors.
It has nothing to do with if I like it or not. I, I just want you to understand, the reason I'm coming to ask for this is because I have high school students, whom are my summer employees, who sit or stand practically in the street and cars don't look and they're not paying attention. And I asked for safety cones and I got those, but it's, I, I don't feel comfortable having a high school student be, be like that. I would feel comfortable if they were in a space where they're not in the street. And that's the only reason why I came back, to ask for the other space that was given to me as an option last year. So I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just asking for what I thought was an option. So if you don't want it to be an option, just tell me. I, I won't ask for it. You can just have three spaces. But I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult. So I, I just want to make that clear.
I could, I could come back and say, oh, Mr. DeVail, there's, you may have high school kids that work his stand.
And they're on the, they're on the sidewalk at that spot because of the position of it. You know, it's just set up differently. They're on the other side of the street. So I, I pulled in and I set it up numerous times this summer. So I just, I know what it's like there and I, I just would feel more comfortable if they weren't in the middle of the street.
I think there's a motion to, there is, for next meeting, so.
Move the motion and any discussion on it?
Is there a motion?
There is.
The motion is.
The motion is to table this until the next meeting with pending a, finding out that Mr. Rourke is okay with her being there.
That sounds fine to me.
As well as a detailed drawing and size description of the cart and where it's going to be located at Dockside.
Okay.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Attention? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ford?
Tonight, we're scheduled to talk about the wastewater collection system, but I would like to, if, okay, take a minute, talk about two important items. And they're kind of related. It's because of the weather changing quickly. Last time we were here, we were talking about putting the snow path in and it went in. And we had two good weekends. I hear some good things that the snowmobiles enjoyed it. But we had to take it out because it's melting so fast and it's getting kind of messy and the lake is no longer safe, so we did, took that out. But the, the other thing is mud season. It's like, ah, what happened? We went right from putting down snowmobiles, now we've got to worry about mud season. And our next meeting is not until, I believe, March 7th. So I was just talking to Brad. Right now, with the temperatures, very warm, but if it cools up this weekend and firms up, we might be able to go another week, but it could be as early as March 1st or 2nd, but probably no later than, than March, March 8th or 9th. So I just wanted to tell the board ahead of time and get your permission that I could put the band on as soon as May 1st, if it looks like we need to do it. And then we'll get the ad in the paper listing it and we can come back on the March 7th meeting just to kind of confirm, because it may get delayed until the 9th, but we might go as early as the 1st.
First of March?
Of March, which is next Thursday. Actually, it's hard to believe. But I, I'm looking at the temperature. It looks like nighttime temperatures are getting colder, but if the daytime temperatures stay warm and the gravel roads really start to get muddy, right now, there's still a lot of frost underneath them. So if it starts to come out altogether, then we're going to have to shut them down real fast. But if the cold comes back in and they harden up, we can go another week. And there's a lot of stuff going on right now. We've got a lot of contractors trying to get their foundations in and get delivered, so we want to work with people. And everyone should know that when we do put the road band in, it'll be posted. We will give exceptions on the case-by-case basis, depending on the road and the temperature the night ahead of time and the type of loads you're bringing in. So like always, we work with them.
I only have one problem and I will abstain from voting on it. We have a logging operation going on. You know, and when we started it, we were going to, we're going to be done, you know, the beginning of March. It's never, we've never posted that early, so.
Well, it's going to be, yeah, yeah, Brackett Road, yeah, you've got to be careful. If that gets soft, you're going to have to keep them in there and just have to wait and pull them out, pull the wood out later or get it going fast now, get it, you know, cold days, get it, pull on the cold days.
I will go there tomorrow and give the bad news.
Well, like I say, it's going to be hard for them, too.
Well, they're going to have to, you know, they're going to have, you can't leave trees down there and you can't, you know. So I will deal with that, but I will not vote on this.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, Dave and I did talk and I'm in the same boat of an Ospey there, we're starting to look at the roads today and with these weather forecasts, it's, you know, it's in the back of our minds to protect the roads and our investments in them and stuff. And, you know, we hate to shut people down and stuff, but as Dave said too, and I do the same thing up there, we work with them on cold, cold nights. They can run in the mornings with permits and, you know, like a logging operation could get a load or two out in the morning and they could cut the rest of the day and then get ready for the next morning and stuff, so.
That's what they did today. They worked, they did it in the morning and they were not on the road today because I said, no, don't you dare, so. They can get waivers from you to run early morning then.
Yep, day by day, yep. So I'd, I'd make a motion to, to allow Dave to have the, the option to post the roads as necessary without having to come back to us for it, because we don't meet for another two weeks, yeah, a couple of weeks here. So if it happens in between, then he has the ability to take care of the roads a second time.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain.
Great. Okay, so we're going to move on to the asset management. As you know, we've been working for the last few years on different asset management aspects of our infrastructure. Last year, we applied for a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services SRF loan that was then forgiven. And that, this is the result of that program. We worked last year with our engineer, Underwood Engineers. And so tonight, we have with us Margaret Blank from Underwood Engineers is going to make the presentation, which is part of the program. Tonight, we also have Sharon Rivard is here with the Department of Environmental Services. She's been also with the state going around different communities and trying to encourage communities to do this, because a lot of people are not, you know, keep putting off, but the sewers are very important. We've got to be a sustainable community. We've got to be planning for those. And so this is a very important step, but it's a process. It's not the final step. It's just one step and we've got to keep moving. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Margaret. She'll explain it and then we can ask some questions and we can have a little demonstration at the end. Margaret, you're all set?
Like Dave said, I'm Margaret Blank with Underwood Engineers. Here to talk about your wastewater collection system asset management plan. Like Dave mentioned, this was funded by a loan forgiveness program through DES. So what is asset management? And the goal is that it's a decision-making tool that helps you provide a desired level of service at the lowest possible cost. So it's about efficiency. The components are level of service, asset inventory, identifying critical assets, lifecycle costing, and a long-term funding strategy. Level of service is about meeting customers' needs and expectations. Another component of that is regulatory compliance. In Wolfborough's case, you were required to map your private sewer systems within your service area. You've also been required to address infiltration and inflow. And level of service also addresses availability. You want to serve as many customers as, as possible and avoid backups and overflows. Asset inventory. Wolfborough has nine sanitary sewer pumping stations. The two largest were originally built in the late 1930s. The Mill Street Pumping Station collects almost all the wastewater in the collection system and relays it to the treatment facility. Both Lainer Street and Mill Street Pumping Stations are located in and serve very busy commercial areas. Wolfborough has almost 85,000 feet of town-owned sanitary sewer. And nearly, there's nearly 21,000 feet of privately-owned sanitary sewer, which ties into the town's system. The town owns 342 structures. Most of those are manholes. You have a few force main cleanouts. Um, you have a few force main cleanouts and some air release valves as well. Part of this effort is identifying critical assets, uh, those that might have system-wide impact. The Mill Street Pumping Station, uh, the transmission main to the wastewater treatment facility. Um, there are also assets that might impact a large number of customers in the event of a failure. The Lainer Street Pumping Station, uh, sewer mains that, you know, would cause a big problem if they were to fail, uh, would include the siphons, which, uh, could cause a potential overflow to the surface water or a main or force main that serves a hospital or school. Lifecycle cost. We mapped out all the replacement costs for the next hundred years and figured out if you replaced everything in your system at the end of its useful life, it would cost four hundred, or, sorry, forty-five point eight million dollars, which comes out to about four hundred and sixty thousand per year. Now, that's a conservative number. We took a conservative approach and priced everything at full replacement costs. You might be able to, um, rehabilitate some assets, line a gravity main or rehabilitate a manhole rather than replacing it. But I thought we'll start conservative. Uh, the need over the next ten years is about two point five million dollars. Long-term funding strategy, uh, some resources you have are sewer user fees, uh, system development fees. Hopefully, you have, um, some budget reserves. If you're lucky, maybe you can set aside some surpluses, uh, debts and loans or loan forgiveness, or grants. Um, I also set up a little bit of a demonstration of the mapping part of it.
Let me keep talking.
Oh, okay.
What I want to, uh, explain, uh, and also take questions also about what we're doing, uh, Margaret's gonna show a little bit of the, um, of how the, uh, a- asset management plan's gonna work with, uh, in the field. So, uh, we've collected all this data now and to be able to have it, uh, in the, uh, in a tablet, uh, for the operator who's working on the pump station, uh, will we have the ability now, all the data we've collected for the, either the sewer manhole, the sewer line or the pump stations is in a file somewhere. Well, this software we're gonna be able to do is, and we'll show, this is a demonstration again, the green lines are showing the sewer and, uh, we're going between manholes, uh, the, uh, when you go to the top right, land the pump station. So, that's a sewer manhole and that's a sewer pump station. So, we're gonna just kind of click on and show what the assets were.
Right.
And this is more of a demonstration, we still get some work with the, the software we're gonna be, we, uh, is a, called, um, what did I just say was? Utility Cloud is what we're working with on and that's gonna be able to have a lot of the, uh, be a lot more automatic, so this demonstration. So, again, this is just linking us to a file, so we can pick, pull up the pictures of the, uh, the, uh, the pump station. So, you could, uh, there's a generator out there, so seven, for instance, was working on that generator. We're eventually gonna be, have the tablet, he'll come in, log in the time he's there. Actually, we'll know where he's at, because it'll be G I S located. So, oh, are you at the pump station? Yes. And then, are you working on the generator? Yes. What we're doing, we're changing the oil today. That'll be able to get uploaded and maintained. So, now we'll have all the maintenance records. So, we'll be able to better track preventative maintenance and also corrective maintenance, uh, when we see problems coming. Other things we could have in those files, again, we got our pictures, but we have the data records, you have the O and M records, um. So, again, we could have, you know, if they, again, for somebody retires, we have all the information about the pumps, um, you know, the, uh, proper maintenance procedures on them, things like that could all be linked into that and, uh, you know, standard operating procedures. So, we have certain things that are almost like a resource that they go in, instead of having to drive back to the shop and looking at the operation manual, they can have it right there on a tablet. And, but most importantly, we're gonna be tracking those, uh, those tasks as they're doing them. And then we can input the cost, if we're rebuilding a pump over the cost. And then, we'll have it all, every year now, this will all be uploaded, uploaded and this document can continue to be a live document. And that's one of the things we're, we're talking about, uh, in terms of it, it, it doesn't do us any good if it just sits there. What we need to do is continue to implement this, keep it up to date. And then we also have to talk about the funding, which is, uh, again, another big issue, uh, which we've talked about on the water side. And I think at some point, we should have a workshop just talking about our capital reserve accounts. Uh, we're talking about the water side. And right now, we, we kind of have one in the sewer side, but it's really for the treatment plant working on the crisis, the hundred twenty-five thousand, that's a treatment plant capital reserve account. But at some point, we need to look at the sewer system. And right now, in the short term, this year, we're looking at the I and I, because that's a high priority for us, with the construction scheduled for 2019, which will be the first highest priorities, again, and knocking down the I and I. But some of these other bigger projects, looking at the pump stations and some of those needs over the ten-year plan, we're gonna have to seriously look down and figure out how we develop that plan. And one of the things I suggested here, which it makes a lot of sense, we have debt service now on our I and I projects and the R I B projects. Uh, those debt services go down, that lowers our tax rate and right away, we spend the money somewhere else. One of the things we were looking at is each year, as that debt service goes down, whether we could hold that and appropriate that amount into the capital reserve account, thereby kind of keeping the fixed level that's going to sewer capital and see whether we can make that work over a long period of time, just an option versus having to bond projects. Uh, sometimes on the bigger projects, it's, it is good to bond, because with state money on the state revolving fund, we get low interest, uh, but we're also hoping to get the grant money. And that's where, you know, when they, when they make the grant a little nicer like this one, a hundred percent grant, it's hard to say no. But, uh, so those are the things we're looking at. And, uh, without, I answer any questions or if anyone has anything about the, uh...
Of course I do. A couple of things, uh, the program Utility Cloud, is that part of this thirty thousand dollar grant?
No, this was all about the inventory and we did everything here on Excel spreadsheets, so everything can be uploaded to Utility Cloud. What we're working with Wood and Current now is, is got those townwide and they've been pilot testing the Utility Cloud. So, this year, we're, we're committing to Utility Cloud and then gonna be, all this is gonna be updated into that.
I guess I'm looking for, that's got a cost for us. I was trying to find out whether, whether it is in any of the grants that, to get the Utility Cloud. Is that coming out of your budget? Are we gonna have to budget for it next?
Yes. It'll, it'll, that's a good question. So, it'll be, it'll eventually will be, right now, in the budget, we have, uh, on the operations side, uh, ten thousand in the building and grounds, fifteen thousand on the water side. That's where the fee is. So, what we do is, it's a program, we rent, it's a cloud and it'll be a yearly ser- service fee. We're not gonna buy the software.
Okay. So, you have, you have your user amounts in the budget?
We have all the data though, all the data we'll have. It'll be our data, but we'll be using their cloud, jumping in and out, how that all works.
Right. It's close enough for me, okay? Um, the other thing is, when I read through here, this, I thought you were gonna go over this. One of the things that, when I read, it said that we had an asset management plan for the wastewater treatment facility and we don't. What we have is a maintenance plan opposed to one of these. So, in the sewer system, you have many components of it. So, we may need, uh, four hundred and sixty thousand to do just the collection. We still have the pipe, uh, the plant and we still have the R I Bs. So, at some point, we need to take a look and know at that total...
So, at the same time, Wood and Current has been working on the treatment plant, long hundred-year plan there. So, that's also being worked. This specific grant was for the collection system and pump stations, which is significant. So, we're still working on that. And as we do know, we are very, very careful about the, the proceeds we have in our accounts and we're trying to make sure we solve the effluent disposal project first, you know, and then also mitigate the, uh, I and I. But if there's any much money left over, hopefully that can be, uh, to start the fund for the, uh, the capital reserve fund.
Right. But we don't have the picture of the whole cost of our sewer system.
It's very close. This one here gives you, you know, for a hundred years.
That gives us our collection, doesn't give me my plan, it doesn't give me an asset management on the R I Bs.
That's coming, yep.
Yeah. So, if, that figure is gonna be more than four hundred and sixty thousand by the time we get it. And that's the figure and the numbers, we need to get our head around.
Yep.
Um, because, and then maybe we have to do some priorities in terms of which plan and which items come first out of the different areas.
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's one of the things, we, we gotta start thinking about it and we gotta start planning. But again, a lot of the cost estimates are in here, which they are expensive, if you did the sewer alone. But for instance, if, if, say, in North Main Street, which we know we have an old water main, we have an old sewer line, that's the next project we're planning. But we can't do that for ten years, because right now, we still gotta finish that street and then we gotta do South Main Street. So, at some point, that's gonna be the next big project. We started talking about that, but it's, it's, and that's, if it's done all together, if we do the stormwater, then we're gonna knock down, we have the, you know, scale of economy with this and hopefully, you know, costs will come down and those will have to be the bigger bond of projects. But we gotta, again, look out ten years, twenty years from now.
I, I, I agree. I, I don't have an issue with that. I'm just saying is that when we start taking some of that debt service and we do a capital reserve account, are we gonna do one big one for the sewer system, the whole system? Or are we gonna do, you know, a small one for this part of it and one, that part of it and another? Which is kind of where my head is starting to think I'm turning...
Again, another excellent question. Uh, there's so many different needs and competing needs. If you have one cap reserve, the benefit of that is all of a sudden, something breaks, okay, well, now we gotta jump into this one. You can use all the money for that. If you kept two, then one's only can be used for treatment plant, the other one's for collections. We, we should have that discussion though. That's, that's, that's...
And the other thing I saw, that the estimated fundings for the next ten years, it's starting two thousand seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, so we're gonna have to move that whole chart down. Because we were supposed to spend for a pump station in, uh, two thousand and seventeen, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand...
The engineers like to spend our money. That's the problem with these guys. You gotta make sure, you know, give us a little more time. They, they're looking, because what, what the reason that is, is they're looking at the useful life. Technically, we, we're beyond the useful life of some of our assets. We're being good Yankees, just because the useful life's not done, we don't, you know, you don't haven't got rid of your husband yet and he still may not be, you had the end of his useful life, but you just keep moving on, you know? But, uh, so, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to revisit that, yes. And that's gonna tie into the C I P, which is what we're really setting the priorities. But this is really about the needs and then trying to develop funds, uh, to meet those needs. And it's not something that's gonna happen within the next, it's over a long period of time. There's also some education stuff that's in there also. We, we have a nice brochure and I think what we'd like to do is, in the summer, try to get that information out, because we are gonna be talking about sewer rate increases next year. This year, we had a water rate increase, January. But we, next year, January 1st, we'll be talking about a sewer rate increase, probably about two percent. And we should also, then hopefully by then, we'll have developed our long-term, uh, funding plan.
My last thing is, can we have a copy of the PowerPoint? That was a really nice way to kind of...
It was summarized, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought I had, uh, that, that was not in your packet?
No. I got this thing I was reading.
Okay, okay, I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You all set?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Rowan, next we have the two thousand and eighteen voters guide.
Uh, yes, the draft voters guide is in your packets. Uh, I think it's ready to go unless the board has any revisions, uh...
Yeah, I just, these are just real small ones. On page, let's see, where am I? No, page seven. Page seven. Um, I was wondering, um, on the road upgrade, and it's the third sentence, is, um, to recommend an extra project, and I was wondering whether we shouldn't put in parentheses, Railroad Avenue? Because I think that's a significant, um, uh, road and it might be, um, it might help people understand why we added that extra project. So, that I...
To accommodate an extra project and what are you adding?
Uh, to accommodate an extra project, comma, Railroad Avenue, just so they know what that extra project was. And then the, on page nine, um, and it is at the end of the first sentence, a second sentence, says, New Hampshire D E S administrate the two, I, it should say, New Hampshire D E S, two thousand and fif- fifteen administrative order by consent. And that will be the same language as you used on nineteen. And so, it's the same...
Order by consent.
Yeah. It's exact, if you go to your Warren article nineteen, you use that exact wording. And those are the only two. Mr. Rowan, I thought you did a very good job on it.
Thank you. So, uh, the arrangements, uh, with the newspaper, the Grand State News, is that this would appear in their March 1st, uh, their, their first, their first, uh, Thursday in March, I believe it is.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen voters guide with, uh, Linda's corrections for publishing. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Next we have the, uh, mileage reimbursement for two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, the IRS has upped the mileage reimbursement a penny. And, um, so the board would like to, to make this applicable for, uh, town employees and others...
Stop that.
No, no.
Okay.
That apply for mileage reimbursement through the town.
This is retroactive to January 1st?
Well, no, we're making it, uh, effective tomorrow.
Any discussion on the mileage? Everyone good with that? Okay. Make the motion to amend the town's mileage and expense reimbursement policy by changing the mileage reimbursement rate from fifty-four to fifty-four point five cents per mile, so that it reads as follows. Uh, mileage and expense reimbursement policy, town of Wolfborough, purpose, the purpose of this policy to fairly compensate town employees for the cost of business and professional development expenses, as well as the use of their private vehicles on approved town business. Two, reimbursement, mileage expenses will be reimbursed at the rate of fifty-four point five cents per mile, effective February 22nd, two thousand and eighteen. This rate may be revised by the board during the year, as it may be necessary. Other approved expenses will be reimbursed upon submission of valid receipts showing the actual payment by the individual. And C, said request for mileage and other expenses shall be submitted upon forms provided by the finance office and must be approved by the department head or, and/or town manager. And three, uh, insurance, in order for an employee to qualify for mileage reimbursement for the use of his or her private vehicle for town-related business expenses under this policy, the employee shall have, provide the town with a copy of declaration section of a valid personal or business auto policy with himself or herself indicated as the name insured, the vehicle in use, to show limits of liability with a minimum of one hundred thousand per person and three hundred thousand per accident for bodily injury to others, one hundred thousand to property damage to others, one hundred thousand, three hundred thousand uninsured motorists, bodily injury, and five thousand dollar medical insurance payments coverage. Or the policy shall show a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars combined single limits for liability protection.
I'll let for half of so.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
I couldn't quite get one of them.
Didn't know I was getting myself into it, I turned the page. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna step down for the next one and let Linda do the town manager selection process.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, first, I'd like to read a memo that I received from Alan Ghul. Uh, he is the head of MRI, our recruit, our consultant. We have received resumes from thirty-three candidates. recruit, our consultant, we have received resumes from thirty-three candidates, these resumes were received from sixteen states, including ten from New Hampshire, additionally, there were five candidates from Maine, three from Massachusetts, two each from Ohio and Oklahoma, one each from Pennsylvania, Florida, South Carolina, Virginia, Colorado, Montana, Arizona, Rhode Island, New York, Connecticut, and Illinois. Of those candidates, four, four hold a Juris Doctorate and Bachelor Degree, fifteen have Master's Degrees, ten candidates have Bachelor's Degree, and the remaining four did not disclose having a college degree. One candidate has withdrawn since submitting his resume, citing that a sal, the salary is lower than his current one. I also got an email from Alan Ghul, we have one candidate who cannot make the March fourteenth interview date, and I, I'll come back to that, but I want people to know that. These resumes are being ranked, and essay questions were sent out on February fifteenth, they're due back on February twenty-sixth. The essay responses will be reviewed by MRI team, and we will begin our preliminary background work in preparation for our phone interviews. Talking about the one who could not make the fourteenth, I was wondering if the board would like to interview that person on the sixteenth, if we didn't have, if we didn't feel we had two good semifinalists.
Fine with me.
Is that okay, if we have two good semifinalists, I'd say no, but if we felt we would, might wanna look at them, we can do that, or her. Okay, the next item I have, I, and it was in your packet, I, I went to the Wolf, I called the Wolfborough Inn and asked them what they could do for us in order to do the interviews. They have three suites, and it's three oh four, so I'm assuming it's up on the third floor, they will rent us those rooms for two hundred and fifty dollars plus nine percent sales tax, so that comes to two hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. They will have coffee, tea, water station, that's eight dollars per person, I figured we have about twenty-six individuals who are gonna be there, that will cost us about two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. And then we have choices for lunch, and with twenty-six, it would cost us seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents for a grand total of about one thousand two hundred and ten dollars. They will work, we could cut down the number of choices for lunch, we could eliminate a salad, we could make some changes, we could, instead of having a dessert or having salad, we could have some snacks with the coffee, tea, and water. I also called Brewster Academy, they will have, they will rent us three rooms for a hundred and fifty dollars, we would have to get our own drinks and snacks throughout the day, and we'd have to order in lunch, because they are on vacation, and there is no food service at that time at Brewster. So, to me, it looks like we're looking at the difference between, you know, probably four hundred to five hundred dollars at Brewster, and a thousand two hundred and ten for the Wolfborough Inn, and so I wanted to see what the board wanted to do.
That cost, for Brewster, you'd have to add in the cost of the lunches, if we order out to come in?
Right, I, the room is one hundred and fifty, and then we have to get, you know, I'd have to go down, I'd have to go down and get from Dunkin' Donuts, and get some stuff from there, and then we'd have to, Hux Hogies or something, bring in a platter, and we'd have to get some, you know, plastic ware, so it's up to the board on what they would like to do.
We have the funding, right?
Mr. Owen said he thought we could find it, but we're also, if we pay top price, we're also hunting for another ten thousand. It would be obviously easier for me if we went to the Wolfborough Inn, because we're going to be at town elections the day before, so it means that I'd have to run around, but I'm more than willing to do that, if that's what the board wants.
I think we have enough of, on our plates to make a fund on that one, that, you know, would make more sense, even though it's more money, coordination at, say, the Wolfborough Inn would make a lot more sense, that we wouldn't have to deal with, because we have elections, we're gonna be interviewing, there's no sense in any one of us running out to get stuff, it just doesn't make, wouldn't make sense to me, anyway.
Yeah, I, I think I'd agree with that also.
Dave, powers?
Wolfborough Inn sounds good to me.
Okay.
It's because they have other facilities, easy to park and whatever, you know?
Okay.
We don't have to do any, bring anything.
Okay, that, that really pleases me. Would you like me to see if I could go down to two wraps instead of three wraps, or do you wanna leave it just as it is? You're okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, alrighty, thank you, makes my life easier. All right, I put in your packet, the list of applicants who have sent us emails for the town managers, interview panels, I have one who has withdrawn, it was Susan Harrington, she has a young child, and she cannot get childcare for the full day, and she told me the other day. So I have given you, and in her place, I, I was thinking of Alan Harding, I have given you some possible panels, I did that just for us to have, have a place to start discussion, in no way do I feel that has to be it. In terms of the department heads, Pat Waterman and Matt Sullivan are the only two department heads. So, does anybody have, I, I put it on the second page, I listed panel one, panel two, alternates, and the ones that were not included, I also gave you the reasons why I chose a certain person, we had a number of secretaries, we had a number from the planning board, and we had a number from the ZBA, and I tried to only do one of each of those categories. You can see, I've, I've given you some information, and I'm more than willing to make any kind of changes you might like. And I would recommend putting Alan Harding in for Susan Harrington, I was trying to keep a, one person on each of the panels who were younger, the next generation.
Then also, if somebody really, especially a town employee that really, really wants to do it, you know, makes an issue, maybe you could let him refer on.
I think that's a decision of the board, we, we, when I talked-
I don't want a can of worms, but we want everybody to be happy.
Yeah, when I talked to Alan, once you get the panels more than six, he felt that they become hard to deal with, because people then won't have more than one time to ask So, does anybody have any issue, would like to change somebody and move somebody else in?
I think it's good that you moved Alan Harding in as one of the, from the alternates.
Okay, I'll, I'll read them, and, and if anybody would like to change him, let me know. Panel one would be Jeff Urquhart, he's our, in the Finance Department and Human Resources. Marie Dergan, she was the only one who had, was in Public Works, so I picked her. Ann Blodgett Hoberton, she is on the Heritage Commission, she's on the Wright Museum, she's on the Wetworth Watershed Association, so she represents a bunch of nonprofits. Kathy Barnard, we know she's the head of the Planning Board. Katie Johnson is a young woman who grew up in town, she was here from Scratch Bakery. Erin Morrissey is representing the chamber, and that would be panel one. Panel two would be Pat Waterman, Matt Sullivan, Mike Cooper, who was the past headmaster of Brewster Academy, Peter Cook, who is putting up the new house next to Carpenter School, and is a member, alternate member of the EDC. Alan Harding, he is working with me on the Special Events Committee, he's a past member of the ZBA, he's on the EDC. And the last one is Sarah Silk, she's on the ZBA, Conservation Commission, head of the Household Hazardous Waste Collection, and Drug Collection or Medication Collection. So those are the ones, does anybody wanna make any changes? Okay, I will get with Mr. Owen, and we can send them a letter saying they've been chosen. I thought I'd read to you an answer to some of the questions that I asked Alan Ghul that give you a little idea about the interviews. I asked the question, will MRI meet with the panels prior to the interview, and if so, when? He said that it's typically, it typically is tough to get everyone together for the day of the interviews, let alone to prep. We usually provide everything the panelists need to know in an email about a week before the interviews. This includes about four pages of sample interview questions. I have been, I'll have to make sure that I don't provide the same questions to all three panels, or candidates could be asked the same question multiple times. We then convene the panel about thirty to forty-five minutes before the first interview, and based on the timing, I think we only have about thirty minutes that we can spend doing that. I, I, it, it's gonna be a tight day. That's when they go over the questions, and they're asking people to develop some on their own. Let's see if there's anything else much. If we could get all the panels together a week before the interview, he would come in person and do it, but he feels that we have to have everybody there, he, he would like to have people who are panelists to do some of their own questions from their own perspective. MRI will be giving us a scoring sheet to help us score the candidates, but it will be a consensus of the group. So, that's a little bit of, look, does anybody have any questions? Luke, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you Linda. Okay, next we have old business, any old business to go over?
I do, I have some, some dates. First of all, Fisherville, which was scheduled for March tenth, has been canceled due to the weather, we don't think we'll be out on the ice. March fifteen, here at the Town Hall, it's going to be, the Route, all of a sudden, I forgot what it was, Route twenty-eight is gonna be another public forum. On March fifth is a candidate's forum at five-thirty at the library, and on February twenty-seventh, at six-thirty here in the Grade Hall, is the Master Plan Informational Forum. Just some dates.
Five-thirty on the fifth, you said candidate's night?
That's correct, five-thirty on the fifth. Twenty-eight is six-thirty in the Town Hall.
Any other old business? Any other business, the board? Sarah, do you wanna do your, do you wanna speak to the medicine, take back program?
Sarah Silk, and I'm here as the site coordinator for the Lakes Region Household Hazardous Product Facility, and I wanted to report back on our medicine collection, our first midwinter medicine collection, which we had last Saturday, February seventeenth. First, I would like to thank pharmacist Sarah Connolly, who donated all of her time and services for that day. She's been a very loyal supporter, and has worked for us for years, along with a couple other pharmacists, and she helped to get this going because of all the requests that they have at the pharmacy where she works. We collected forty-two gallons of various and sundry medications, two gallons controlled, fourteen gallons non-controlled prescriptive medications, twenty-six gallons of over-the-counter and personal care products, and that's things like your vitamins and all those kind of things. Four households came from Alton, twenty-two households from Wolfborough, one from Brookfield, two from New Durham, and two from Tufton Borough. This is a significant amount of drugs for an initial midwinter collection. In the last four years, and I went back four years, because that's what I have on my computer, everything else is on a computer that crashed, in the last four years, we've had twelve collections, and the collection that we had on this seventeenth was more than eight of the twelve in the last four years, we have three a year. So that was pretty significant, and in the last four years, we've collected as little as a hundred and two gallons, and as much as a hundred and eighty-four gallons of medications. And the one year when we collected a hundred and eighty-four gallons of medications was the year that the Drug Enforcement Agency was not having their, their twice-a-year collections, and so the public responded more heavily with our program. We are one little tiny, little effort, we do it four times this year, three here in Wolfborough, we've done the February one, we're gonna do the third Saturday in June in Wolfborough, the third Saturday in August in Wolfborough, the second Saturday of September in Alton, and Dean's guys will be participating the last Saturday in April, and the last Saturday in October with that Drug Enforcement Agency, and if you have controlled medications you would like to get rid of right away, you can go down to the Police Department, walk into the lobby, immediately on your left, there is a drop box, which according to Officer Mary Swift, is getting great usage.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank the newspaper too, because, because this was the first one, we asked them for coverage two weeks in a row, and both of them did that, and without that, that is the best way we have. Also, Wolfborough Community TV did things on that Roll and Scrolling Bulletin, and then they did a little interview thing, which I never did see, but they, Peter assured me it was on there, so I wanna thank everybody for their efforts.
Thank you. That's Alan Harding's report.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first I'd wanna point out that the 2017 town reports are back from the printers, I think they, they look great. I've got some here on the table, if anybody wants to collect one, and of course, they're for, out for distribution in all the town offices downstairs and at the town library, and I think the police and fire station has some, and we'll see about getting them out to some of the other town facilities also. The Fire Department is in the process of hiring two new call firefighters, which is a, a good development, and they're both relatively young residents of Wolfborough, who both have various levels of previous experience as, as firefighters, so that's, they, they shouldn't require a lot of extra training to get certified. The Public Works Department has hired a new equipment operator to replace someone that left us recently, and his name is Steve Petchey, I believe the name is, and he's also a Wolf, Wolfborough resident, so, those are some good developments. I thought I would show you that we received a check from Primex for the vehicle that was totaled last December, it's a check in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and ninety-five cents, so, the check has arrived.
The truck?
Yes, I, I think the truck got here before the check, but... The official ballot for the March thirteenth town elections is, is ready, if anybody wants to check out the ballot, it's available down in the town clerk's office.
Did you get one?
Not yet.
And today, Selectman Senical and I met, along with the, the, the police and fire chiefs and others, with the architects on the public safety building space needs study project, and went over their, their space program calculations relative to what needed space requirements for the departments, and we had a lot of conversation, and revised some of the numbers, mostly downward. So, that's, that process is going on, and at some point, they'll come before the board here and, and make a presentation towards, towards the end of their, their work. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Any reports? Brad?
Yeah, last night we had a planning board meeting.
Yeah, last night, we had a planning board meeting, only public hearing was the Yum-Yum Shop was in for their site review, which was approved, their renovations and little small addition they're gonna put on down there. It's the only meeting I had, but I also wanted to announce that on February twenty-seventh, we're gonna have the master plan kickoff at six-thirty, right here in the, the Great Room. We're hoping a lot of people come to that and sit down to hear what we're talking about for chapters and get some community involvement with that, so we'll be hearing more about that later as it, as it goes on.
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yes. It's a Tuesday night.
Dave?
Conservation Commission meeting, and as David Owen said, I was at the meeting this morning for the public safety building.
I went to the EDC as an alternate, so I'll leave that up to Dave Bowers to report on. I went on to, went to the Route twenty-eight committee meeting last Thursday, and we were looking at the area. We talked, had some more conversation about Pickering Corner, and also talked about going on down South Main Street to the Alton Town Line, and that is the section that will be at the next forum, even though there may be a table with Pickering Corner, but it's more conversation about the South Main Street heading towards Alton. I also, just before this meeting, went to a chamber social, and at that social, somebody asked me whether the board was going to go to the radio station and talk about the Warren Articles, and I thought, well, that might be a very good idea, and I didn't know if the board wanted to go in and, probably not as formal as we did under community television, but talk about the, quickly run over the Warren Articles. So, Luke, you'll go, anybody else?
Depends on the time. Yeah, same here, just have to see how it fits in, but yeah, I'd be willing to participate in that.
Would late afternoon, if I could get it, be best for Brad?
Yeah, probably, yeah, would be.
Okay. And you can't do Thursday.
Thursday's the only thing I can't do.
Dave?
I went to the EDC meeting, and I'm helping three people write books about Wolfboro. I've been trying to campaign to get people to vote for Bay Street, and I've been busy with other, other things.
So I will call the radio station, get some dates and times, and I will send them to Dave Owen, and he can either email them out to you, and we can respond to Dave, and I will set that up.
If we do the afternoon, so Mondays wouldn't work for me, just so you know ahead of time, so.
No Mondays?
No Mondays, yep.
Okay, yep. Luke, any days?
That's fine, and even if they like, even if, even if the radio station wants to just tape it, we can each go in there and read a couple, even if everyone can't get there.
Okay, I will-
It's fine, you know, either way, fine, either, mornings, afternoons, I'll make it happen.
Not Monday.
What about you, Dave? Mornings or afternoons for the radio station to do the Warren Articles?
Anytime.
So we won't do Monday afternoon, and we won't do Thursdays?
Questions in the press?
What day is this gonna be?
We don't know yet, we're gonna come back with some dates. Public input? Anyone here for public input tonight?
Move, we're going to non-public, second.
Yes?
Yes.
David, I can start signing if you pass the stuff over.
Yes.